Hey Ray, how are you?
Good.
Good afternoon. We will call to order the November 2017 City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to welcome all Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. I would like to ask at this time for everyone to turn their cellphones and PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Tupper?
Here.
Mr. Stigemeyer?
Here.
Ms. Hartz?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Stern?
Here.
Mr. Waits?
Here.
And Mr. Frost?
Here.
We have form.
Thank you. I'd now like to briefly review the meeting format for all our guests. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of ten minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, the case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The consent agenda. The Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion or vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, then it is removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining consent agenda items. The administrator will now read the consent agenda.
Your consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the October 2nd 2017 minutes and the following two items, which consist of an annexation and comprehensive plan map amendment for 1627 Auburn Street. This is to annex and provide a comprehensive planned land use amendment for UCAC 2 and a general zoning of C 3. The item number three on the consent agenda is a site plan review for 120 Parkridge Drive, which consists of an addition to an existing building and modification to the site.
Thank you. Are there any Commission members or guests today who would wish to have items on the consent agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? If not, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and October 2nd minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent agenda is approved. We will now proceed with the regular agenda.
Your regular agenda this evening consists of an annexation and comprehensive plan map amendment for 1215 Mason Road, 1307 Mason Road, 4.73 acres on Denton Drive, 3.8 acres on Denton Drive, and 17.7 acres on the north-south Mason Road, as well as 1028 Wooddale Circle. This consists of, as noted, an annexation, a comprehensive plan map amendment to a couple different land use classifications, as well as a rezoning to a PUD. And the applicant is here. If you have any questions?
Mr. Taylor is now here as well.
I got it.
Any questions from the Commission to staff? All right, if the applicant would like to come forward.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I am Anthony Lawrence of Brownstone, representing lot properties for this development. There's information inside the packet that covers the details of this mixed-use commercial development envisioned to be a new downtown for the North Columbia area. It builds upon a lot of the synergy that's currently happening or being focused in the North Columbia area, the North Main Street corridor. There's the current investment of dollars to the tune of about 50 million to do some improvements on North Main. There's also some other interests happening two exits down with the South Carolina United Football Club. This property was obtained by our client Lot Properties about two years ago. Since then, we have had a total of six discussions with individuals in the community because we have done this and several other projects in the City of Columbia and recognize the significance of making sure you get input from the community. It will have, or is intended to have, economic impact from an employment standpoint, quality of life standpoint, as well as complement the existing communities that surround this development. It's 70 acres, 68.99 acres. It will include, as I mentioned earlier, a mixed-use commercial and some residential. At present, we are seeking annexation, planning approval, site plan approval, so that we can move forward with the next stage of development with the project. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer any.
Any questions from the Commission?
Just for clarification, tonight's item does not include site plan approval. So it's the approval of the PUD, which does have governing documents within it that regulates uses and all sorts of different criteria that go into the site plan review.
This is a PUD approval.
So it's a PUD approval. Depending on how the project comes develops, it may have to come back for a site plan or my site plan may be at the staff level, depending on which item within the PUD is being proposed in the future.
Okay.
And staff is recommending approval, subject to the five conditions that are outlined in the report. There are just some kind of technical items that need to be added, that the applicant didn't have time to correct or adjust prior to coming to you.
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Senator John Scott, who represents that particular area. Seated behind me are the residents who live adjacent to that property on that side of Mason Road. They care not to have any of that property annexed into the city. I've made a recommendation to this group on more than one occasion to go meet with that community. My understanding meant to talk about design, but never talked about annexation. We've had a lot of issues in that area as it relates to annexation. Also, people here from adjacent community as it relates to the annexation part. That means if this property is annexed, immediately the property behind it, which a homeowner's been there 40, 50 years, would immediately become contiguous and be able to be annexed into that portion of the community. We care at this point not to have this property annexed, as we asked early on for them to go and sit down and do the full scope of everything that's going to happen on this development. Also, if you look on the Mason Road to North Main Street, you barely can get the traffic out of there now. There must be some real major construction done to widen that portion of Mason Road. We already have traffic congestion right in that same particular area, just with the neighborhood behind it. So at this point, we ask, we would ask the Commission to either carry this over or deny the annexation. Community is very upset about trying to annex this property without having full disclosure to this community. They would prefer really to deny this annexation. I'll entertain any questions you may have, too.
Anyone have any questions for Senator Scott?
At this point, I don't know how far they got in real discussions. I know they've had three or four different discussions in a community further up, which is not the community that's been involved, been in the Bethlehem community. North 21 Terrace area, I'm not sure how much real discussion they had with it, but what is before us today is the annexation part of it. Now, what will be designed on that property, whether it's in the city or the county, the community will come back then and voice their concern to what they are actually comfortable with going on this particular property. But their concern now is just annexation. They're not interested in this property annexed into the city.
Because they will be contiguous and they will be subject to potential annexation themselves.
And also the traffic.
A question for staff.
What's the current zoning, I'm sorry, in the county?
I think all is residential.
It's currently RS, HD, and rural, so it's two different classifications in Richland County. So it's their single-family, high-density, and then their rural classification.
Currently?
Currently.
So this would go to a PUD?
It would go to what we have as an urban edge community center, and then it would go to a PUD. And whether it's developed in the county or in the city, the traffic would, if this proposal were approved by the county, you'd still have the same amount of traffic, so...
Will this increase the traffic on Mason Road?
Well, it would, if you look at this particular site plan, they have three means of ingress and egress out of the development. So one of those driveways is on Mason, the other two are on Main Street. So you would have additional traffic on Mason.
Let me also remind you, that property sits down in the low portion of the flood, and that's why on the same putt you see the pool, which is really was a holding pool, as water, and we're trying to fix the other side of the Harlem Heights where the water comes back across, coming across Mason Road. And during the flood, it actually knocked a hole in North Main Street. So if you had traffic coming on North Main Street without that property being fixed at this point, those folk would have a real serious problem trying to get out of there. The other part, and keep in mind that directly across the street from that property is a fire station, so I'm not so sure how that's going to work as well with the fire department being directly across the street. I don't even know, not sure where they've got curb cuts to be able to drop that traffic back into North Main Street. Shortly above that is the Wilkes Road, and there's a light at the Wilkes Road. Coming from the Wilkes Road, there's a small piece of commercial, I think it's a Pepsi-Cola, Pepsi-Cola bottling company and another little company that's adjacent to it. So I'm not so sure how they really plan to get that traffic back in there. Right now, what's before us, it's a community that doesn't want this property annexed into the city. Those other issues, if they want to sit down with the community, work out those different issues, and then maybe they can reach some kind of agreement and come back. I'm not anti the development, I just want to make sure that the community is comfortable with what comes into the community.
You said currently part of it is high-density?
Within Richland County, yes, it's RS, HD, which is their single-family, high-density district.
What kind of density does that represent?
I wouldn't know that off the top of my head. I don't know if Brian does.
John, is it possible to defer this so that they can have time to meet and discuss this out?
Well, it's actually the Planning Commission, it's your recommendation for the land use and for the zoning, which actually goes to city council. It's then actually city council that actually does the annexation. So city council, your items here, you're going to actually pass a document for recommending change of the land use plan, and it's actually city council that will go in and actually do the ordinance for the annexation and do the statutory, you know, first and second reading. So usually what happens is you're providing the recommendation of those regulatory tools so that when they go to annex the property, they will then take your recommendation of those regulatory tools and use those. And then we will, the city council will have one ordinance that annexes it and assigns the zoning at that time.
I was just wondering if a meeting and coming back before us again would be more beneficial than tonight?
I mean, I guess my, I guess the question here with this particular gentleman is that it's about annexation, it's not about the land use plan, it's not about the zoning. So, I mean, you could defer it if you'd like to, but then I guess the question would be what conversation about land use and zoning will you have differently in December about that to provide your recommendation to city council for their consideration of those three items?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't understand how you can adopt a land use plan on property in the county without having an annexation. You have to have it...
They're not, they're not recommend...
I'm sorry, sir.
Well, they're not recommend, they're making a recommendation to city councils. Their actions today are all recommendations, they're not taking any formal legislative action.
I understand that, but how do you, how do you make a recommendation on a plan, land use, or anything that's not within the program of the city?
If we recommend annexation, am I correct, today? Land use and zoning, it's a recommendation to city council.
Even with that, how do you make a recommendation for land use and zoning to property in the city, not in the county that's not in the city?
So I'd be glad to answer that.
I'll refer to staff.
We have two different processes. One, where we can combine three different processes in one, and that makes it so that the applicant doesn't have to go to as many meetings. The other process is one where the applicant can apply to city council for annexation. The annexation would then occur, then they would come back to Planning Commission and get a recommendation for the zoning and the land use, and so that process takes more time. So typically, we do it as we've agendized it here with the applicant's request, where we consider all three of those things at once. But they certainly could apply for annexation. The annexation could go through its process, and then you could assign the land use and the zoning after the fact, so you could do it those two ways.
Till this community is settled with its use of what this property is going to be, along with annexation, I'd ask you either to defer this item or to deny this item. Because if not, we're going to end up at council doing the same, the same thing.
Any further questions? Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come, are you, please step?
Appreciate Senator Scott and the citizens that are represented here from North 21 Terrace and other areas. You'll find in the putt document specific information from six different meetings we held with the community, that we actually took comments from them and we included it in the putt document. That will sort of highlight what some of the responses were as a part of this process. Because we recognize what's important in representing our client to fulfill the needs of trying to move a project like this forward. Second, there is an extensive traffic analysis that we've done. We've had meetings with SCDOT, we've had meetings with the city traffic engineer to determine the necessity or not to have a traffic signal put at the corner of Mason Road and North Main, which was requested by the community. Third, the question of density. Right now, we're estimating in the residential area anywhere from 100 to 150, 200 units, depending on if we do townhomes or if we do townhomes. Right now, the majority of that is a cluster of about 80 to 90 single-family residences, again, in response to the community's initial request to make sure that the kind of living, the kind of dwellings that we put in this development will be complementary of their neighborhood. Just wanted to make sure I answered all your questions, because you may not have had opportunity to go through the putt to see all of the specific information that we included.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
If you go through exactly what he just mentioned a second ago, you'll find that most of his meeting were at Bethlehem Center. Bethlehem Center is not North 21 Terrace, it was at the church. That's a whole separate community. As I spoke to them early on, and I'm going to ask them to go down and meet with North 21 Terrace, Bethlehem is a college place community. It is not North 21 Terrace. My understanding, if you look through your book, I think they met with them one time and they only met with the board, and from what I'm getting, they had not heard back from themselves. And today, I happen to come him on a whole nother different issue to discover if asking for annexation. That's not fair to this community.
Thank you. Wait, there's a gentleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions to ask.
State, could you please state?
I'm sorry, my name is Harold Murray. I live in the, within the city of Columbia, South Carolina. Sorry. I have a couple of questions to ask, and then I'll follow with some comments. Is this property in the City of Columbia?
No, to my knowledge, it's in the county.
Okay. Is this property in Councilman Davis's district?
Well, since it's not in the city, it's technically, until it's annexed, it's not in Councilman Davis's district, but I believe this is adjacent to Councilman Davis's district.
You are correct, sir. I ask those questions because I read an article in the newspaper recently concerning a development that's going on this property, I presume, that's called Azure S at Heritage Creek. And I believe that this is the reason this annexation wants to occur. This property and development, as I see it, is a part of a political process that I believe is unjust to the citizens of the City of Columbia. Today, I received this card with some very prominent politicians on it, including Congressman, current mayor, former mayor. And if you won't mind, if I would just read one... And if you won't mind, if I would just read one part of this. It says, first of all, it says, "We stand with Sam. Vote November 7." It follows to say, "Proven leadership, whether it's helping create thousands of new jobs and raising salaries for our police officers and firefighters, driving major investments like Azur Est at Heritage Creek." Now, this comes from Congressman, I'm sorry, this comes from Councilman Davis. This property is not in Councilman Davis's district, neither is it in the city. So how is it then that he can claim to have an influence on, on this property going forward when it has not been annexed? I believe that this zoning board is being used as a political pawn to, to allow a councilman or to assist a councilman in being elected over his competition. I believe that to be very unfair. I also believe that this board has been politically influencing other matters, in particular, the Bull Street project, in which decisions were made there that currently cost the city, the citizens of the City of Columbia at least $100 million, for which we have nothing to show for it. There's a stadium there that the citizens have paid for. There's a developer that we have given tens of millions of dollars. But if you go over there, other than the stadium being built, all you see is mounds of dirt. But the citizens of Columbia are paying taxes on the decisions that were made relative to zoning and opportunity for the city. My concern is that this development will be another Bull Street that is going to cost the citizens of Columbia a significant amount of money. There are no details as to what is really going to be done on the property. There are no details about infrastructure. Senator Scott mentioned the fact about the, about the storm or the flood that we had a couple of years ago. That flood washed out part of the street that Mason, I'm sorry, Ma-, North Main Street, just below Mason Road. There is going to have to be major work done there, and I don't see a private investor sticking his dollars in it. The dollars will come from the citizens of the City of Columbia. I do not believe that this property should be annexed because it's only going to contribute and end up being another Bull Street project that's going to cost the citizens of Columbia a significant amount of money for something that may, may or may not. We're over three years into Bull Street right now, and the citizens of Columbia-
Well, let me, let me, let me just stop for one second.
Yes, sir.
Number one, this is the Planning Commission. Number two, we are not politically influenced by anyone. I want to make that clear. We make a decision based on the facts. We do not make a decision based on whether Mr. Davis is running or anyone else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I am James Starnes, and I am president of the North 21 Terrace Neighborhood Association, where this property would be located. And I rise to basically let you know where our community stands on this development. And I want to give you a little history before I get into any specifics. This project was started, and there was a meeting held, and I learned of the meeting. After the meeting, North 21 Terrace was not included in the meeting. And we were told that we were not included because there was not a realization that we needed to be included, even though they met with Meadow Lakes, Greenview, and Prescott Terrace, which are surrounding communities. After that, when I contacted the group, we got outstanding support. They explained to us what their plans were. They were willing to meet with us. After meeting with us, I requested another meeting with all of the neighborhoods. They agreed to meet with all of the neighborhoods, and they were willing to answer all of the questions and did what I called an outstanding job. The purchaser of the land, I've heard who it is, but we've not met the gentleman, we've not had any discussions whatsoever with him. After having them explain to us what the plans were, of course, there was a lot of apprehension from our community. Some of the things that were explained to us was that there were plans for an Applebee's businesses, like an Applebee's to come, a neighborhood Walmart, housing that would attract people like professors from USC. And of course, the neighborhood became even more apprehensive because of feeling as though they were getting a sales pitch. There is a Denny's right across I-20, less than a mile from the property. Building has been empty for years. There's a shopping center immediately across Main Street from the property that has been basically empty for years. So the community, of course, apprehensive about the possibility of buildings being there and not occupied. The neighborhood was also concerned about the housing that was proposed and what would happen if the housing is, does not actually sell, the possibility of having a lot of vacant buildings right in the neighborhood. There was a press conference held the other day. Again, the neighborhood was not notified of the press conference, which added to the concerns that people had about rather or not this was a good idea or a good fit for the neighborhood. Again, as we communicate with the architect and the folk, we've gotten all of our answers, all of our questions answered, and we've gotten very good support. But the, and the neighborhood has not come out to say we are opposed to this project. I am pleased that we have gotten feedback from Councilman Davis and from the mayor assuring us that we're going to be engaged throughout the rest of this process and assured that this is something that the city plans to make a success. The other primary concern that the neighborhood had in addition to the potential for empty buildings and empty residences is that North 21 Terrace is adamant that they are not interested in being annexed into the city. And the fear that the neighborhood has is that, as expressed, is that if this area is annexed, then we are now contiguous that North 21 Terrace would be annexed. We've been assured that North 21 Terrace will not be annexed into the city. So what appears to me and what I have gotten from the neighbors is a desire for two things. To be assured that what has been outlined in this plan actually comes to fruition, and that there is some kind of mechanism in place to protect the neighborhood from another abandoned shopping center, and making sure that the neighborhood is not annexed into the city. There is also, I think, a parcel on Denton Drive and a parcel on Wooddale, and my understanding is that is to allow constructions access to that property. The neighbors who are living right next to that are very concerned about heavy equipment coming back and forth, basically through their, almost through their yards. So what we are interested in is making sure that the neighborhood is protected. Many of these people have lived in this neighborhood for years, and they are, while not opposed to development, they are adamant that they are interested in making sure that they get what is proposed, making sure that they are not annexed into the city, and making sure that whatever construction goes on does not have a detrimental effect on neighbors nearby.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everyone that comes up, remember, there's a two-minute time limit for all the speakers. I'm sorry? Whoever would like to come forward, I don't have the list.
Hello, my name is Barbara Roach, and I'm the president of Homeowners Association of Meadow Lake Subdivision. I'm here because of two concerns. One is that we're concerned about the property and what will eventually happen to it. If you look up here on that C-1, and I brought this up when we met at the, I think, the third or the fourth time that we were invited to one of the meetings at the church, the fire station is right there at C-1, where there is an exit to come out of that development. There's also another exit right there before you get to Mason Road. And if you look at the picture here, the folks, no, back to the blue, back to the blue, and no, right there, folks in the blue will not be able to get out of that community without going through that little small area there and then coming into the large area. So if you have 100 houses and they have children, school buses have to go in there, folks have to come in and out and go to work, and so forth, and then you've got Mason Road, one exit. So I don't know how they're going to get in and out. Plus, there are proposals to do townhouses, to do a gym, to do casual dining, have a, also some ponds, the ponds, I think, the nine and eight or whatever is on there, I don't have my glasses on. They overflowed during the event of 2015. We could not even out of Meadow Lake, get out of Meadow Lake because we couldn't go to Blackwood exit because that bridge was out, and then we couldn't come out going up Main Street. We had to get on 20. So there's an issue with water flooding in that area. So in our opinion, we don't see all of that being developed there. And we're concerned, just as been mentioned before, that construction will start and whatever funds or money would run out, and then it would be another eyesore at that corridor, just like some of the other places we have if you go further up Main Street. So we're concerned about that. And I guess we'll look at it further if they come with a different plan, to see if, if it can be revised some other way. And then we haven't given an assessment. Why do we need it? I mean, there's, why do we need it, the whole development? Is there a need for another gym? Is there a need for something else that's there? Do we have a need for those homes in that community? Is that a growing part? It's right up on the interstate, so it's not going to grow anymore. And then the other thing I want to mention is that in Meadow Lake, we have, I've been there 40 years, and when I moved there with my child, I had to work two jobs, and I bought that house for a small amount of money. Now, I got my tax bill today. Guess what my tax bill was? I have a small home, about $1,100, $1,100 square feet, no garage, small but nice for me. And I got my bill today, my bill is $249. I do not want my tax bill to go up because of annexation. I don't want, I have all the protections. I have police, you know, the sheriff, I've got water, I've got everything that's there. And we want to live quiet, and as A E R P says, we want to age in place. And we are very, we are very pleased to live where we are now, and it's conducive to our lifestyle.
Thank you. Our time's up.
Good evening. My name is Gabby Thomas. I'm a Realtor with Realty Haven, and I'm part of the leadership team for W A T Properties and Azur Est at Heritage Creek. I grew up with Ms. Roach's daughter, so I feel vested in the community, as well as a graduate of Kenan High and a number of the other schools. We do need a lot of the things that are encompassing this plan. The last thing that Ms. Roach said was, "We want to age in place." There are a lot of people in this community who would love to stay in their community, but will need some type of assisted living or to be able to age with grace in one of these townhomes or one of these low-maintenance homes that we intend to build. Also, we have a sports complex. It's going to be a multi-sports complex. That is something that we need. We need after-school programs for our kids to keep them out of trouble, to keep them away from crime, to keep them away from gangs. This is exactly what we need in our community to plan for the next 50 years out, to make sure that our children are college-ready. We also have a small school. I'm a Realtor. When I put someone in my car, no offense to the community because I'm from this community, but people do not want to go into certain corridors of the city because of the bad reputation that some of our schools have. We do need more tax dollars to come into District 1 and a number of the schools so that we can be stronger and be built for the future. There is so much that's needed in this plan within our community. We have a Celebration of Life Center. We do have ponds. A lot of people, kids in our community, they can't afford to go to the beach. They can't afford to go to Lake Murray, but they can get on their bike, ride to the local pond, and put a pole in the water. This is the type of lifestyle that we are trying to show our youth. You can see beauty within your own community. You can go to play ball with your friends and don't have to worry about what's going to happen to you on the walk home. A lot of what is encompassed in this plan, especially the jobs, is exactly what we need in this sector. And we do not want to continue to be held to the pomp and circumstance of the leadership in some of these communities that's going to 10, 20, 30 years from now, we're going to look back and say, "Wow, we just would have looked at this idea or that idea, maybe we wouldn't be in the position that we are." I'm from this community, and I truly believe that a number of these things, from retail to new housing, if you're looking for new construction-
Thank you.
-at this price point, there's really nothing else to offer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there anyone, is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
I'm not on your agenda, but I just want to say one thing. I'm Cindy Lightner. I live on Mason Road, and we adjoin this property. Now, Gabby, you said you grew up in Hollywood Hills.
No, I'm here-
Okay, let me ask one question. If you propose that you grew up and you knew this community, then why? Explain to me-
I, I don't think we can have that conversation going on.
Well, we do need to have the conversation-
That's a separate, you got to address the commission, please.
I'll, I'll address you. They've had six meetings.
Okay.
We were invited to one, only because we found out about it. Now, we were told that we grew up in this community and we need all of this, but we don't. There's a lot that, I maybe agree with the 120-bed housing for the home, that might be a good idea. But when you say that, you know, you grew up in your community and you totally leave out the community that you're dealing with, we're, we're at a total loss as to why we were totally left out. Have a neighbor right back here that sits beside me, the one that is concerned about at 1100, Wooddale. We were asking, could a fence or something be put up in his yard so that all this heavy equipment stuff won't go through there? He's concerned about that. There's a lot of concerns, and we have been, like I said, totally left out, even to the announcement of the planning that they did. North 21 was not notified at all. Mayor Benjamin has told us that he is going to see to it that we are included in everything from now on, and I hope he keeps that promise.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward?
My name is Valisha Adams, Vision Victory, A L I S H A, a resident of 1,009 Denton Drive since I was approximately three or four years old. And as the other speakers have stated, no one approached any of the residents of our community. There was nothing sent by mail. There were no notices posted on the road. There, there was no consideration for the residents of North 21 Terrace, that this property was sold two years ago and that it had already been mapped out as to what the city and the developers wanted to do with it. And that lack of consideration for us when we have other neighborhoods who are right there in walking distance, who've had six meetings, they say, how are they apprised of what's- of what's to happen in our neighborhood when we're not? These people mostly in the neighborhood have lived there for 40 years or more, and they've paid for their homes, and they're planning to leave those homes to their children. If you come in and you develop this new community, you're probably going to demolish some of the homes in the area like they did across the bridge for parking spaces in West Columbia, those historic homes. And you're gonna offer what is the equivalent to me of a modular home to someone who's lived in an all-brick solid house for 40 years. That neighborhood is an all-brick solid neighborhood, it's not vinyl siding, it's not pre-made windows.
Thank you. Time's up.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward?
Good evening, my name is Joanne Means, and I'm speaking on behalf of my mom, who's 87 years old, that has resided in North 21 Terrace for about 50 years. And I apologize for being late, so I didn't hear all that was spoken, but I'm trying to understand, why are you going to build a residential area for elderly people in the neighborhood that's already got homes that they live in and they're comfortable in? And are we thinking that they're gonna leave their homes that they've lived in all these years and move to your residential senior home? I don't think so. I don't think our children are gonna be going to a pond to go fishing in the neighborhood that's suggested. I think that this is a ploy to gain money, to raise the taxes, we can't get simple things like bumps in the street to slow down the increased traffic that's already going on. We can't get people to come into the neighborhoods now to assist with our elderly that's already there. And I think that what they're offering is a great plan, but maybe somewhere else. I think that what they're proposing is going to overrun our seniors and our other folks that are living comfortably. North 21 is a great neighborhood, and we'd like to keep it that way. We're not saying, don't do your projects, but just take it somewhere else and be a little bit more considerate of the people that are already there. And take note that you've got all these other places that are empty, in Sand Hills, Richland Fashion Mall, Columbia Mall, all these empty places. Why are you trying to build in this location and think that you're gonna have an onslaught of professional people and students that are gonna run to want to be in that area? I don't think so. And I think I speak for lots of the residents that live in that area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I believe there's a gentleman in the back.
My name is Israel Cannon, and I'm the one that live at 1100 Wooddale Circle and 1028 Wooddale Circle. It's, we live between those, that little road that goes between there. But anyway, I've been, we've been there for, I bought the house back in 1973, I've been there for 44 years, and we are quite satisfied with our community. We, it's not a bad community, we're just, we're satisfied with it. And as we said before, we bring out the traffic part, whenever the interstate, it's a wreck on Interstate 20, and that's quite often here lately, the traffic gets, getting totally jammed up, and they're coming down Mason Road to get off of the interstate, to try to get through, to go back out, you know, to get off, to go home or whatever, which whether to be going. But my concern is, what, what will we do? Because the sign was right up in front of my house, where that little road is. So I wonder, will that, where they have, where the construction will be going through there, it's right by my house there. So I wonder what will, how, how, were they gonna put up some fence or something, or how are we gonna do that? Because, I mean, they got grandchildren there, they're running all over the place there. Yes, it could be quite dangerous for them out there in that road, you know, if they decide to come through there. I'm not against a building of a new community and all, I'm against it being in 1100 Wooddale Circle out there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I'd like to say, our staff does a great job, and when they recommend something, they've done their research. I think it's a great idea. Then I'd like to ask for a motion to defer this to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we defer item number four on our agenda tonight for 30 days and ask the parties to reach out to each other and see if they can come to an agreeable solution and bring it back to us.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion is deferred. Next item. There are no more. There's one more.
Yeah. Yeah. Closer than we see it. Yeah. I wanted to say, you guys only realize how close they are. They're pretty close, they're very close. Jim, you wanna vote?
Yeah.
Prove it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured that.
Next item.
Just for notation, the next item, which was 1908 Blossom Street, that was deferred at the applicant's request, so they would be coming back in December. So the last item for the evening is 3329 River Drive. This is a request to rezone the property from single-family residential District RG2 to office and institutional C1. It should be noted that this request came before the Planning Commission in November of 2012. The Planning Commission at that time recommended denial, and City Council thought subsequently through their meeting, actually, sorry, and so after Planning Commission, the application was withdrawn. We do receive letters from the neighborhood with regard to this, and staff is recommending, recommending that the Planning Commission recommend a City Council denial of the land use and the zoning. If you look at the land use, it's essentially residential classification, and so all that summarized within the report.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, again, this piece of property has been a hair shop for 33 years. I know 33 years ago I helped this shop relocate in this property. It came to this property, it was grandfathered in 33 years ago. Ladies are simply asking that, that her property be able to conform with the usage that it has, that's all it's doing. It's been a hair shop, it's still a hair shop, and she wants her property to conform. In the past, she's on, she's still on an adjacent lot, she's on the house behind it. She came in 2012 to look at getting a change, she changed her mind, she came back this year to try to get the zoning changed, so it is, zoning does a, conform to what the property's been used for, for the last 33 years.
Is there a reason, is there a reason why they want the change?
She just wanted, she wanted, she want, in the event, in the event she decide to lease it down the road, or she decide to close it and come back, her grandfather, the grandfathering of it won't fall off, you know, there's a 12 months. If you do something within 12 months, she's gotten older now, something could happen, she could be sick for 12 months and come back, and so that means her property that she's paid for and had for the last 33 years, she would not be able to use it for what she's done for the last 33 years.
Is there anyone who would like to come forward? Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Jean Moody, and I'm the owner of 3329 River Drive. And I would just like to say, I've been located at the salon for 33 years, and I never had any problems or anything, and no complaints from the community, and been there 33 years, so I'm older now. So I know I cannot continue to work so long now because I am older. My desire to, wanting to change to C1, that upon my retirement, that perhaps I'll be able to have a widespread of being able to lease the building to someone else, or maybe sales to someone else. How many people want to be at the salon? I don't know. But however, if I'm granted, or C1, possibly, maybe attorney office could be there, or studio, photography, or accounting, tax service, or something of that nature, because I have great respect for the community since I've been there so long. And I wouldn't want to encourage any other type of business to be there, but something that will be complimentary to the community. And that's all I would say.
Thank you very much. I would imagine staff's concern here is a large array of things that can fall under a C1 classification?
I'm sorry, what concern was?
Is a large array of things that fall under that C1?
Essentially, that's it, I mean, I think that's probably the concern of the neighborhood if you read their letter too. In the, you know, the RG2, it's a very short list of permitted uses, and the C1 is a much larger use, so, you know, I don't think anyone has any complaints about the particular use that's there, it's more about, you know, you set the policy up, and then, you know, any of those things that are in the C1 could certainly be there at some point in the future because that would be their right.
Anyone else like to come forward? Any other questions for staff? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, board members, my name is Kathleen McDaniel, I'm the president of the Earlwood Neighborhood, which is the neighborhood within which this property is located. I've lived in the neighborhood for, since 2005, so more than 10 years now. I've been the president for over a year, and before that, I've been very involved in the neighborhood organization. This is a neighborhood that is extremely desirable these days. We'll have another one of our residents come up in a minute and talk to you, she's also a real estate agent. But this is an area of the city, the North Main area, that is just blossoming. People want to live here, and our neighbors are very intent on keeping this area residential and keeping it welcoming for residential families. River Drive is already a busy corridor, and we are working very hard as a neighborhood to turn this into a welcoming gateway for the rest of the North Main corridor. We're working on traffic calming issues, we're considering doing roadside plantings, we're doing beautification projects along River Drive to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. This is a interior area of our neighborhood. If you look at the pictures before you, you can see there's nothing but residential uses surrounding this property. Almost all of the areas surrounding it are zoned residential, it's only the townhomes adjacent to it that are even commercially zoned, but even those commercially zoned properties are being used for residential use at this time. So those are even consistent with the commercial character, with the residential character of the neighborhood. If this property were to be rezoned as C1, as you've heard from staff and from the applicant, there's really no control or no limit on what those types of uses within the C1 designation could be permitted. We could be looking at possibly a funeral home, a parking lot, we could be looking at doctor's offices, and all of those types of commercial uses are not consistent with the residential character of our neighborhood that we have worked so hard over decades to maintain.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer McBroom with Caldwell Banker, and I live in Earlwood, and I've lived there for over 10 years. In the past two years, we've seen a large increase in the values in Earlwood, mostly because we've had some builders coming in, building higher-priced houses, and so our range of values is, I guess, greater. And a lot of that is because of the attention that the North Main area's been getting and because of Bull Street. River Drive cuts right through the middle of our neighborhood, so you have one side of River Drive, which, it's a very sprawling, large neighborhood, but because of the way it cuts through, it makes sense when you're in the neighborhood because you're, both sides are lined with 1930s, 1940s bungalows. But if you start allowing commercial properties in the middle of the street, it's gonna end up really dividing the neighborhood in half, and it's not gonna feel like one neighborhood anymore, it's gonna feel like two different areas. Earlwood has worked really hard to, you know, stay the neighborhood that it is and keep the architectural look that it has, and because of all of those things that they've done, you know, prices are improving, and I just would hate to see that deterred by what's going on with this property. I do feel like I totally understand that she would want to have this zone as C1. I would love to see this property later on get divided into two lots because it's big enough, or become a residential property. There are several old stores like this in Earlwood and in Elmwood that have been turned into single-family homes. I know that's not the answer, I'm sure that she wants, but I just think, in the long term, if this isn't turned into C1, it could become a property that would really fit into the neighborhood-
Thank you.
to this body regarding the Earlwood Community Preservation Plan, which was adopted by the City Council with this zoning in 19, officially in 1982. The neighborhood discussion in finalizing the plan that was eventually adopted was, took some year and a half over this very issue. And the issue was, for us, the preservation of River Drive as a residential corridor. And this particular parcel, as well as one on the other end of River Drive, were compromises between the ownership and the neighborhood related to the uses at, in 1979. And so, as is pointed out in your documents from 2005, but I wanted you to know that it's predated some 33 years from the initial. And that document, the neighborhood plan, has been the guiding document for our neighborhood since its adoption in 1982. The zoning in the neighborhood is still, with the exception of one or two parcels, the overlay is still pretty much as it was adopted in 1982. And so, and we have, as a neighborhood association, over the years, been consistent in this position before you, that the preservation of River Drive as residential- before you, that the preservation of River Drive as a residential corridor was paramount to the saving of our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Several years ago, the city also adopted River Drive as a historic corridor, and we spent some $12,000 of neighborhood money to get that study done. So the issue has been before you.
I truly understand that community, I represent them too. All these folk have been here today, I represent them. I do understand that, but let me say that right, almost adjacent down the street from this hair shop that used to be a studio, there was a store on the corner. Across from that store, there is a law firm. Up the street, there is the duplex apartment, and then there is the hair shop that used to be a dance studio. Little bit further up, there's another law firm, a diatribe shop. There's also a small, commercial residential building in there. I could understand that she was asking for a zoning change to do something different. She's just asking a zoning change that conformed to what she's already doing. It's not going to affect integrity of the community, because she's already a part of the community for the last 33. If you ask them, "Has she been a good neighbor?", they can only tell you, "Yes, she keeps her property immaculate." And that's all she's asking for. I don't think there's too much to ask for. She's paying the taxes, she's running the shop, I mean, matter of fact, it's one of the better businesses over in that area. There's a lot of, very expensive clients that come at her shop to get their hair done, and that's all she's asking for, and I don't think there's too much to ask for.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Any further questions for staff? I'd like to ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the request to rezone parcel from RG2 to C1.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. I'd now like to ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's over.